So, yeah, let's start with Rule 11L. I sent you all this afternoon where it was from... Oh, wait, do we have minutes? Should we do that first?
Yeah.
I didn't do minutes from the last meeting. We had a discussion last time about the meeting minutes from April 28th, and I don't know if we approved those. There was a discussion around it, because I don't think, Dan, you had read them.
No, and you sent them immediately after the meeting, I think? So, I'm willing to do those two, if Peg wants to move those.
All right, I've had a chance to review them in the meantime, so I'll entertain a motion on either of those.
On either of which?
Or are we just talking about...
The only one we should have is April 28th.
Okay, well then I'll entertain a motion on the April 28th ones.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the motion to approve the minutes of April 28th, all in favor. Counselor Rist?
Yes.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so motion passes three to zero. Okay. Do we have anything else before we should just jump into the 11L stuff?
When did you want to deal with the committee, the new business? You want to wait on that? Who presented that? I forget. Who was presenting them?
Owen.
Oh, the thing about committee members? That was a proposal from Counselor Lynch.
And Owen?
Yep.
Well, they should be here if we're going to discuss it, so.
Yeah, Counselor Zerrit reached out to me earlier today, and I said that, you know, I was figuring we'd just take this stuff. Here's my way of looking at this right now unless somebody objects, is everything is sort of first come, first served unless, A) somebody specifically says that like something needs to pass fast, or B) it's a resolution, in which case it goes to the back of the pile. Just because those are symbolic in nature. So, you know, I figure let's handle Rule 11L today. Let's see, oh, Counselor Gomez is coming up. Let's see what we can do about wrapping up the charter review stuff, and then at our next meeting, if that's all clear, we can start to work on the email proposal. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Omar, you're in silhouette. Cool.
I can't even see you.
Where are you, Omar? That looks nice.
Are you in Puerto Rico? You're in a beach?
Yes, I'm in Puerto Rico. This is my parents' house view.
Really?
Wow, that's beautiful.
Yes.
So we can't see your face, but that's all right. We hear you. There you go, better.
That's better.
Not better.
Great, well, that sounds like fun. Let's, yeah, just turning to Rule 11L. I sent it out today, just sort of a recap of where it stood per minutes. The language as it currently stands reads as follows. It says, "Final and approved minutes for all committee meetings shall be sent to the city clerk for public availability within three meetings from the date of the meeting for which the minutes are documented."
Is that what you remember, Peg, as your last letter?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's totally fine.
Fine with me.
That's what I saw in the... That's just what was in the minutes, so. If everyone's fine with... I mean, is there any further discussion on that? Is there anything that we want to add? Or any further thoughts? Or should we take a vote?
I'm willing to move it if you want. I think it's fine the way it is.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Move accept Rule 11... What is it?
11L.
11L. I don't have it in front of me, okay.
Second.
All right, it's motion and second to accept Rule 11L. All in favor. Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Rist?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, motion passes three to zero.
So you want to put that forward at the next council meeting?
Yes, it's been on our agenda for quite some time, so I will... I'll move that forward for the next council meeting. Okay. Well, I think let's move along to the charter then. I can share my screen if that works for everybody.
I don't care.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm just too unhappy the mayor's not here because he doesn't have to send her what we've decided on.
Yeah, you know, well, she'll be able to watch the video. With the share screening, that's actually probably a little bit more useful. Okay, so here we are. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Great. Okay. The one thing I...
It wanted to be in Article 6, right? Okay.
Yep. I'm going to do a little bit of formatting stuff before I... Because there's no like... The page breaks are kind of... I think adding all the text to the page breaks got a little screwy, but that's okay, we can figure that out.
We'll fix that when you do the final draft.
Okay.
We didn't do any changes here.
Yeah, we're good.
The combination thereof... Oh, you passed it.
Oh, yep.
We just added that.
Right, so it's training and previous work experience or a combination thereof. So...
I guess we probably had that.
Who added that?
The committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only changes that aren't the committees will show up in blue or orange. The formatting, I tried to get it under control, but it's still a little chaotic. But if something's purple, then that's... Purple is me, so.
Is that... When I did red before, that was original language that we crossed out. Is that what... It looks like that's what you're doing, too.
No, we inserted that.
Not that one, yes. I'm looking at it the next time.
Oh, right, yep. So that if it's got a strike through it, like a line straight through it, then that means that we're removing it. If it's underlined, that means we're putting it in.
Well, on this particular section, it's pretty... It's a little confusing with all of the stuff that we went over. I can't move it. It's yours. The scope part of it, we were worried... My questions that I brought up were brought up by Bob Parent regarding whether or not we can change the scope dealing with mass general law, et cetera. And the city attorney said, "Why don't you just write that in?" I can't... I'm sorry, Tom. You have to go forward a little bit, maybe?
Forward like down here?
No, back up. There was a line that's in my particular... That he had added that says, "According to mass general laws", which would eliminate the need for us worrying about whether or not we are changing anything that is in conflict with mass general laws.
Okay. Do you want to share your document? Is that easier?
Yeah, why not do that? Do you have to turn yours off?
Yep, I'll do the no.
So, in this version, I took what he had asked for and tried to put it in. So, we eliminated all this language here, and this establishment scope is ending up to be what was left of establishment scope and adding this language that the city attorney wanted as allowed by general laws. Because if we wrote anything that changes the scope of the department, it has to follow general laws. At least, that's my interpretation of what he meant in our discussions with him. And then we added this language because, if you recall, we actually did an ordinance last year that changed the function of public works a little bit. I think it had to do with maintenance of public buildings. Anyway, that's why that line was in there. These are from the committee. So this is a change. All of this language, we decided to remove. It was fairly specific and could be addressed through ordinance. Tom, do you recall other things about that?
I remember, yeah, so this is all, yeah. This, like, we thought we... I remember us feeling like this language, as it was written, was very, like, it felt kind of transitional, like from the... Like, there's some things in here that seemed like they were really sort of holdovers from, like, the, you know, the transition from town to city government.
About the Act of 1952, et cetera, so.
Right, and we wanted to make it a little bit more general because the relevant legal... Like, the relevant laws concerning how a Department of Public Works operates could change over time. So saying, "We're going to..." "In accordance to this specific law", could be an issue if there was like an overhaul at some point.
So, this look without all his comments is what I determined we ended up with. It's much simpler because general law is dictated, and ordinances can dictate function, like we just did. Public-related function activities. We don't have to put in like tree wardens and garbage and all that. That's up to the city through ordinance, as long as it's allowed by general law. As I recall, that's where we were.
Right, yeah, we wanted there to be that flexibility so that if you wanted to do something like that, it wouldn't necessarily be a charter change.
So Omar, do you agree with that being that you were there, too?
I wasn't yet...
We're losing you, buddy. Internet connection isn't good.
Let me move.
Take your video off, Omar.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't there for this section because that was when my mom had a surgery, and I was in the surgery for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Anyway, there's a big debate about it, and that's what we ended up to. He... The green I have formatted in green is his language. So we went down to the formation of the Board of Public Works. This is why I wanted the mayor here. We originally, if you went... If I go back to the other one, we went to five members on the board, but... And the mayor was okay with that originally, but then when we had our discussions, she changed her mind because it was difficult to get members on the Board of Public Works. And Tom, I think your comment about why we did it, about having two members be able to meet with the mayor, for instance, that comment you wrote, that's the reason we went to five. But I'm assuming the mayor still wants to keep it to three. We wanted to do five to have more... The ability for members to meet with the mayor. But on the other hand, if you have five members, they have to have three to have a meeting. So I think she was worried about that, and that's why she said, "Let's keep it to three members", and that's why all this language did not change. We did the alternate explorations and all that. And we added this language per the attorney.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be nice... I wish we could get the mayor's perspective here because the last time, you know, I wasn't privy to any of those discussions with the attorney or the mayor. So the last time I heard, you know, we had a pretty... What I thought was a pretty solid reason for going with five. I do appreciate that finding people to serve on boards and committees can be challenging. But I thought it was the feeling of... I mean, I know that Stan McCoy had sat in and had given some thoughts on this and some... That it was a challenge that, for instance, two members of the Board of Public Works right now couldn't like carpool to a training. Well, they could, but, you know, like, it would be very difficult. It'd be very difficult for a member to call up another member and ask for advice on something because there's only three of them, and that conversation is a quorum. You know, so I...
She was here because I just texted her. Peg has her hand up.
Yes, Counselor Coniff.
So I recognize that this is an unknown. Why can't we just put this on a table, ask her, and get her answer? Like, I don't know why we're having a conversation. The question is, does the mayor want three or five? She's not here, let's move on.
Okay.
We don't know.
I agree, and I...
We can ask her offline.
If I had it to do over again, Tom, you'd be at that meeting. It was rushed, and I should have had you at that meeting because that would give us two people to remember what the mayor wanted and what the city attorney wanted.
Well, here's my... This is sort of my idea on how we proceed with this stuff in case we run into other things like this. If I don't have the mayor here saying, "I've changed my mind and would veto this", then I proceed that we take our recommendations... I mean, in the meantime, we could... Things could change, but like, we take our recommendations to the council. If at that point the mayor asks for an amendment, we can handle that. But I sort of, to the extent that it's possible, you know, unless I'm specifically hearing from the mayor that that, that something would be cause for a veto, I would like the close... You know, I'd like for what the council to present to be the closest as it can be to what came out of the Charter Review Committee.
I don't disagree, except I think Peg's point is well taken. I'd rather we... If we have her opinion on it, it doesn't... It means we can move forward fairly easily, and I'm hoping we can do that.
I'm not calling for a vote on anything. I'm just saying, if we get to, you know, the point where we're done with this document and we haven't heard, then we... We'll just figure it out, then. But let's just move on for now.
Do you want me to go back to your document?
I can unless you think that it's easier. I mean, mine has a lot of the notes from the solicitor and the margins.
Well, I thought that's what you wanted.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, but, you know, there are some changes. Well, anyway, let's just go.
Here's yours. I just have it so I can explain what thinking is. So we talked about all this, okay? This is the language Peg that we were going to do here, so you can see it. So if you read through that, point a port a buck, which consists of five members, but we'll see what happens. This is a big change, and we were pretty much in agreement, and she is too, that the term of the Director of Public Works should be three years. And we also wanted to put in that he had to follow the rules and procedures of the Office of Human Resources, but the city attorney didn't like that language because unlike the assessor, which we use to compare that department head and how we put that language in the charter, the director is governed by the Board of Public Works, not the city council or the mayor. So the Board of Public Works has to have final jurisdiction over how he's evaluated. So he crossed out all this language, Tom.
Well, okay, I've got a couple things there. Let's start with that, though. The Board of Public Works is the one who's responsible for figuring out whether or not the... Like, for evaluating them. But like, if we... I'm going to use a super hyperbolic example just to like state my thing here, and obviously, we're not necessarily talking about this. If we had a Board of Public Works that just decided that sexual harassment was fine, right? It wouldn't matter that they thought it was fine. They should still be holding that person to the standards of the Office of Human Resources, right? Like, or do you not agree with that? Like, I agree that the person... The people who are ultimately responsible for deciding whether or not they've performed adequately is the board. But the board does receive some guidance in what an adequate, like, employee... See, this was... I remember this being complicated back then, too. But do you kind of see where I'm like...
I agree with you, Tom. I'd like to keep the language. I'm just presenting in his comments right here what he said. He doesn't understand why we're doing this, but if we want to try to keep it, I just know the mayor likes his comments, too, so I don't know. Again, we'll have to go back over that. What do you think, Peg?
So, the premise here is by that last sentence that's crossed off, Dan, that the committee wanted and Mark didn't. Is that what we're talking about? The notation of Brown that although they are under the terms of the Board of Public Works appointment, they are still subject to the typical and normal human resources issues with that department within City Hall. And so what Mark is saying, "I don't understand, they're part of the appointments process", which is true, but every appointment we make is still an employee of the city, and they fall under human resources.
Totally agree.
So, I don't know why we wouldn't have that in there.
I kind of feel like maybe... I'm sorry, Counselor Coniff, continue. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was done.
Okay. I feel like, maybe if you... I mean, because I remember this being kind of a tedious circular discussion because there were some members that said like, "Well, what if the board decided that that job is so special that actually they should have some special policies applying to them?"
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, and it was like a whole thing. But, I mean, I think that the... It really... It circled around the idea, and this is... I know it's such an edge case, it's maybe not worth discussing, but just affirming that like, while this person is evaluated by a separate board and while, like, a politically important reason to insulate that person from the standard processes, which I can expand upon if we need to catch up on that whole conversation.
I agree with you. I think you were right. The word "governed" leads me to believe that that still gives the... And I need help with that. Maybe either of you can help me with that. I think governed gives flexibility to the Board of Public Works where they can look at the rules and procedures, but if they need to change a timing, a schedule that is presented for most employees in the city and change it for the director, they can still do that. But does the word "governed" mean they are forced to use the rules without flexibility? I didn't think so.
Yeah, I mean, for me, governed means, like, you know, that they're being evaluated by the board, but they are being held to the same rules as everybody else.
And it gives the board something to fall back on if they have a problem. And I recall the mayor was for this, so I'm not sure again.
I mean, I think that what's important here is that Attorney Tanner isn't saying, "What you're calling for is illegal". What he's saying is that he doesn't understand why we put that in. But we put that in after like two hours of conversation, so my inclination is to keep it.
It was a long conversation. I'd like to keep it. Actually, this is a change for me. I've been going with the mark, but, you know, again, we're going to have to wait for the mayor's opinion. What do you think, Peg?
Like, I get that we're deferring to the mayor because if she vetoes this, we're hosed, and it's not going to go. But this doesn't strike me as a make or break the deal kind of a sentence. And if we want it, put it in there. I mean, I... We will have to have a conversation with the mayor, but I don't want to just defer everything to, "She didn't want it, so we're not putting it in there", like...
Well, let me say, I don't know that for sure. I just went with what Mark said. I don't recall anything. I know the mayor liked it originally. Don't you agree, Omar and Tom? I thought in our... Well, Omar wasn't there, but Tom, I thought she did.
Yeah, I think she did. I think she was actually strongly for this. But what I say is, we can right now say, "Actually, we want to keep this", and if the mayor comes back and says, "Actually", or the attorney comes back and they say, "We understand that, but actually, it's illegal", or "It will be subject to a veto", then we can deal with it. But I think there's nothing in here saying, "We cannot do this". It's just him... He's got some question about why it's in there, but I think that the history of that... I mean, I think I'm repeating myself at this point.
I agree. Let's... In the final draft, let's put that language back in.
Okay.
I wanted to go back up here because he didn't like this or until a successor is chosen and qualified. And we... And I... He put it over here, "It means you could choose a new director at any time". And I think, what about if a director tenders his resignation? Was my comment back to him. Do you recall any other defense of that language as to why we shouldn't? I like it. I don't know why we can't keep that as well.
Oh, right.
He's saying that means they can fire a director at any time?
Well, I need to... I mean, yeah, I need to sort of test it, like, check it against other language that we have in here for people who serve terms and see what that says. Like, what does it say for the Human Resources Director right down below?
Well, you see, all of them are appointed... The appointing authority is the mayor. In this case, the Board of Public Works is the appointing authority. So I don't know if the comparison works.
Well, I mean, that part might... Or even if we looked at appointments that the council makes, you know, the assessor, the city clerk. What I'm wondering is about specific... Like, yes, it's a different appointing body, but really, what I'm wondering is, "This or until a successor is chosen and qualified..."
I just think if they went to fire a department without cause, there must be state laws that prevent that. I mean, a person... Just because they politically don't like the person all of a sudden, the board's going to fire them?
I actually read it the other way, that they shall serve three years or until a successor is chosen, which means they might serve five years. Like, who's determined... Who determines whether someone is qualified? That could become political.
Yeah.
And all the term of three years means, like every other department head, they have to be reappointed every three years, just like everybody else. That's the major change we wanted to do. I like to keep the language and see where it goes. What do you guys think, Tom? I feel like it should stay.
I'm fine with it for now. Oh, well, here's the thing. I'm just looking... I'm looking right here. You don't need to scroll all the way up, but I'm looking at the city clerk and principal assessor language in Article 3. And it's the same language. "They shall serve for three years or until a successor is chosen and qualified".
My memory just jived in. When I suggested this, I went to that language, both for... Both for this language down here about the human resources and this. So it didn't come out of nowhere. It came from those.
So my proposal is that we keep it. If there is... If Attorney Tanner has a real concern that this is ambiguous, then we should probably change it in those other places, too.
Our defense of both of these things is that we use it for other appointments, other department head appointments.
Right, and that... He probably just didn't even look at those because there wasn't any changes made, and we're not asking him to review the entire 45-page document.
I think if he did that, he'd probably change a lot of stuff, I think if he did that, he'd probably change a lot of stuff, but I'm glad it's our choices. So should we go on to Human Resources?
Uh, unless Counselor Coniff has any questions, I'm, I'm ready to proceed.
Let's go.
Human Resources, this came from Jane. Basically, she said she changed things based on what was happening. And the word human resources was, uh, I had, we had no problem with that. This was her thing. All of this was her thing. Successive plans, a longevity program.
Oh, right, because there had previously said a career public service program. I, well, she's not, she's not, she doesn't work here anymore, so I couldn't go back to ask, but she had a reason why.
Well, these don't seem like, these seem like logical statements to me. That's why I had no problem with them.
Yeah.
The way it's set up now, I think this is great, development of a centralized personnel record system.
Yeah, I, I think those are.
And Mark changed a little bit of it, but.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Wants us to say career public service program. In my, uh, final draft, I might have said that. I think it's the same thing. See, over here, he says this, so.
Yeah.
And we called it Human Resources Global Change. This is you, Tom, regulate.
No, that's you. I, I just put it into the comments, but that, that's your rationale. I just pasted it.
Okay.
Comments.
Oh, you took the rationales out and put it here. Good. That's fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to get as much out, like just to keep the document as clean as possible.
Okay, I agree.
Area in the text. So that's Article Six.
Are we done with Article Six?
Yep.
Well, yeah.
Just want you to know, in my clean final draft, I did include the election changes, the ranked choice voting and everything. This was right, because this was sent to the city attorney before that vote occurred.
Right.
But in the final draft, we have to include it because it's actually part of the existing charter now.
That's right.
So I had no problem with his changes in here. And again, it's all precinct.
And striking the word preliminary because we don't do.
We, we didn't want that because we don't do that.
And now that we have ranked choice voting, we have something even better than preliminaries.
Good call, Tom. And we're calling them precincts, which keeps us current with what the city clerk and the state calls them. Um, so this is all pretty easy. This is his language, Tom. I forget. Because he, he crossed out a certified by the city clerk. I think this was him. I'm not sure if you're formatting towards his original language.
Can somebody click on that? Something might pop up.
Yeah, if you just hover over it.
Click on it, Dan.
Not working? All right.
There you go.
So that's, that's Mark Tanner's end, yeah.
So this is, I have a problem. He basically just said, said it differently, what we wanted to do. All we added was that certified by the city clerk. And he had one hundred or more voters. I think when he gets an opportunity to fix the language in the charter, he takes it.
Yeah. Well, right, that's a little clearer, but that's not a material change, so I'm.
No, I didn't think, a lot of his things are questions. And we didn't do anything here except, um, we gave the city solicitor thirty days, not fifteen days, to review a citizen petition. That's a change. I don't know why fifteen days was originally done.
Oh, yeah, and we gave ourselves ninety days to respond rather than thirty because that's a, that's a pretty tight turnaround for something that could be.
It, it could be massive. In fact, if you recall, and we didn't do it right, the original welcoming and trust ordinance, which was done and not brought forward in the first, was a citizen petition, wasn't it? Tom, I think it was.
The one that in, when I got sworn in, we were handling was citizen petition, but it, I think they had filled out, it was like an online petition and it wasn't clear that everyone who signed it was a resident of East Hampton. So I think we basically just accepted it as new business and, you know, because clearly a lot of people wanted to talk.
I think somebody challenged the fact that we didn't do all this and that.
Yeah, I, I have the full history and yes, that's exactly what happened. There was a petition. It died because of what the lawyer wrote during that term, that we didn't have the authority to do it. And then the following year, I worked with one of the individuals and we got it to a place where we could pass it.
Yeah, I, I just think that the timing changes are more practical, don't you think?
I agree.
Okay.
The spelling is a little wrong on some of these words, but that's fine.
Well.
I think.
Which words?
Maybe not, maybe ninety, ninety, I don't know. I don't even know how to spell ninetieth. Okay.
You know, who's gonna check this? It's Barbara, because she came in once and did all the commas.
It's spelled eh, nine, zero, T H. That's how you spell ninetieth.
Okay. We went, we, we always do both here. That's nothing. So that didn't change. This is the thirty days. That didn't change. None of this changed.
Wait, there are revisions here. Hold on. I think we just scrolled past something.
Thirty days, go back.
More?
Yep.
Maybe not.
No, all we did was add the.
Those are just numbers, Tom?
No, no, there's a, there's a change I remember and I'm trying to see where it was.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five.
Oh, no, here it is. It's in C, uh, action on petitions. This is important. This is one of the biggest changes in this and it's a little bit subtle.
I thought that's where we just were. Okay.
Yeah, it says, after ninety, it says, if the city council or the school committee fails to act with respect to an initiative measure, which is presented to it within ninety, uh, within the ninety days following the date of its return to solicitor, the measure shall be deemed to have been approved.
You're right. That was big. We set it.
So what, usually, what usually we can just, like, previously it was, uh, if we didn't act by the thirtieth day, it was assumed that it was rejected. What we're saying now is we, you have a longer timeline on this, but if people went through all the trouble of gathering these signatures and bringing, you need an up or down vote on this or it passes.
I think it forces the council to take it up because you could table the measure and, and after time, it would be rejected. So in not dealing with it, they're not saying yea or nay, which gets them off the hook, the council, but then it would be rejected by, what do you call it? A pocket veto? But this is better because this means the council, you can't, you can't ignore a petition. You must do it. I think that was original.
Yeah, and I really liked that language. I thought that was, that was cool, but it's, I just noticed that we, um, with all the little changes, we, um.
I think it's important, Tom, that you add some rationale language here because we jumped right over that.
Yep, you're right.
It's important that the full council see that. That's a biggie. That's a big change. Thanks for catching that. Can we go on, guys?
Yeah, we can go on. Everything else is basically the same.
So Article Eight.
I just think it's awesome that we have a people's veto.
A what veto?
People's veto, when like the citizen referendum thing, if people don't like a ordinance or any measure that we write, they can, I'm just saying, I think this is cool. Um, we didn't make any changes to it. But they can just, uh, if they collect enough signatures, they can suspend a thing that we wrote and then put it on the next ballot.
Okay.
I just think that's cool. We can keep going.
All right. Article Eight, charter changes. We didn't change anything. Here, we changed, this was important to, this is a SARA change, which we like. Words importing any gender shall include all genders. It's more, it's, it's certainly more correct than this, these, this statement. Do we agree on that?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't actually know of any gendered now being used in the charter in general, but that's fine. Like, classic language from the air.
We changed this due to the, this, this controversy around charter, charter appoint, charter review committee and appointments. We were specific here. We wanted four members of the council, but we made it nine members by having more people involved in this.
Yeah, and that was important.
This was his, his language here. He added this language, but it's what we wanted.
Yeah, because with, we, previously it was up to eight people, but you can have a tied vote with eight, so we figured.
We wanted nine. And secondly, the city, the, the council president appoints them, but they have to be confirmed, giving the council all, I guess, veto power over if, if we're not happy with it. And I'm.
I think that's great. I think it's really important. Yeah.
Yeah, because it's just such an important.
I love it.
So.
The council president does, the council doesn't have the ability to override the president when she nominates people for regular committees. But in this case, it's too important. I think it's, it's something I think that we all thought would help.
Yep.
We also extended the term to fifteen months from one year.
And I wanted to say, Tom, you mentioned something that I think is really, really important. And if we had, if we didn't have the COVID and everything, if they take a year to do a chartered review and it goes to the city attorney, it needs to come back. This kind of thing should happen at the, that committee level and then be brought in. But the timing in the charter suggested we didn't, we couldn't do that. And I think if I had to do it over again, I would go around that by saying we presented it to the, to the, we were done, but we ought to be able to review the city attorney's opinion. So by having fifteen months, if this gets approved by the legislature, that helps that, right?
Yeah, I think it does.
We want the committee to be, do all the final work on it. And we went to two thirds here. All of this language was his. You okay on this, Peg? Omar?
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I just, I have to turn my video off because you guys are breaking up and I think my internet's really slow, so.
Okay.
I'm back here.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Um, we changed the ordinance review so that it was every ten years. And we did it in every year ending in five, so that that wouldn't uh, compete with the every ten years and years ending in zero for the charter. And we did this because the word may was crossed off and by having the word may, we've never done in the term of the council, a full ordinance review. It's never been done because it's major work by a committee. So we made it shall, but we did it to the ten years. So what that means is if this passes in two thousand and twenty-five, we have to have a full ordinance review where all the ordinances are looked at and seeing what's not current. We have some ordinances that are very old from. So that's why we did all that. Am I correct on that, Tom?
Uh, yes. And that's, that's right, right. Uh, and it looks like he, he deleted a sentence and just sort of streamlined it by just putting in consultation with the city attorney instead of that whole sentence down there. We extended that again, so we have fifteen months rather than a year. Three months could make a real difference.
But the key to this is it's shall. Shall means you gotta do it. You have to.
You can, you can, I mean, it could be the members go home and read the ordinances and come back and say, well, they all look good to me, but you have to at least do that.
Well, I think the reason it was never done was it was a daunting thing and frankly, there were bylaws that became ordinances that are really old according to Barbara, so. I know that Salem was especially thinking we ought to do that, so if this goes, we'll get it done. So we, is this, we eliminated this language, right?
Yes.
We're not.
Because it's the twenty-first century and,
We don't need to.
This is all online. So like, we don't do supplements. It's just printed out.
Okay, so that's done?
Yeah, yeah, cool.
You have any questions, Peg, or?
No, no, looks good.
Again, we added this language to make it more modern and on the city website.
There was a comment in this that, from Attorney Tanner, that just said fix defined terms. I don't really know what that means.
It means that if we go back to the first article, he changed the definitions. And if we are going to use this, we have to use those definitions.
Okay.
Remember when he, he gave us a whole section on definitions, which I liked. It was clearer. I think that's what he means. We have.
Does that require any work from us right now?
All he's saying is, I think he's saying, if you're gonna use the word website, did you define it in Article One? And I think with his changes, we did define it.
Okay.
We can go back to Article One if you want to look at that.
I'll just scroll up to it on my own computer while we're talking, just to make sure we're on the same page, but.
Okay. And shall conform to the, I guess the word must, he didn't like. He wanted shall.
Yeah.
Oh, well, no, yeah, we've got city.
He wanted this quoted here, the. Right, Tom?
Um, sorry, one more time?
Well, he said shall conform to the state's open meeting law and he actually wanted us to put in chapter and verse here.
Any amendments there? Yeah, okay, that's fine with me.
That means we have to stay current on the open meeting law. I don't know where this came from, these lines.
Oh, they're weird. I don't know what they are.
That's my writing. I wonder if I did that. I don't know.
Okay, so, yeah, that's the thing. There's the, yeah, when it comes to, it said certif, uh, keep certified copies. And, um, I believe Barb said that that is not something that she actually does.
Well, then I'm wondering, he says, why, why would you remove certified requirement? Because we don't do it. And I don't see why you would need to do that, but what do you guys think? I, I would like to keep it. Not keep.
What is, what does certified mean?
I don't know. Does she know what it means?
She's, she date and timestamps them. She, she, you know, I mean, they're kept as records. I don't, I don't know what else you would need from a, for a certified copy. I mean, that sounds like a signature of somebody, which is a little ridiculous.
She does stamp them received, right? She does all that, so maybe that is certified. So maybe the language can be kept because.
And they're posted to our website. And, I don't know.
Here's the one thing.
Certified, just to make sure that the city clerk has received them, stamped them and said, received by, received by city council on this date, whenever we get something, you know, and, I don't know. And when we approve minutes, et cetera. What do you think, Tom?
Right, we, this discussion, and what I'm struggling to remember now is the relevance of the phrase certified. Um, note that this isn't just referring to our meetings. This is each multi-member body, so.
True, that's true.
Does she also do that for every meeting of the Agricultural Commission?
If they give minutes to her, then she has to mark her receipt. Is that what that means?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Uh, I don't know what the phrase certified means in this context.
I could delete it. We deleted it before, but he's asking, why would you want to remove it? But because.
Yeah, but he's not telling us not to remove it. He just doesn't understand that certified is kind of meaningless within the context of what we're talking about.
I think we should just do keep, keep copies. But that's just me. I don't know.
I think that's fine. I mean.
So if you look at my version, you'll see that I, I went with him certified, but you're right, it doesn't have to be.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think certified is kind of like it follows a certain protocol. Every minute follows a certain protocol and that by certifying it, you're saying they have done everything the way we want them done and we don't have that rule that you have to do it a certain way. We have a rule of you need to do the minutes. But we don't have a template and we don't have a process other than Rule eleven L for city council. But certified to me means we're all doing it the exact same way and Barbara's gonna check a box to make sure we're hitting all of the things. And we just don't do it that way. We don't train everybody minutes or minutes. And however you want to do it is how you do it.
Well, that's the thing. I, I guess what I'm, sorry, Dan, what were you saying?
Well, I, I had, went with Tanner. I think we should stay with the word keep, in my opinion.
Okay, I, I think I just want to, maybe, this is something. Okay, I I think I just want to maybe this is something we can check with Barb about. When I remember her having, there was some significance to that word, but I need to double check.
Well, she said that we don't do it. She doesn't certify.
Whatever it means, but like, right. That's what I'm saying is that she was saying that she doesn't do it, but I but but now I'm thinking about it, like, doesn't do what? Like, what does it mean to certify something?
I think, see my comment here, costly? To certify it, what does that mean?
What does that even mean?
I don't know. I just don't think it's necessary to give them what Peg just said because.
Yeah.
Don't have a kind of standard way of we're we're doing minutes and everything and I
Right.
I mean, it's very binary. You've either done the minutes or you haven't done the minutes. We don't have a rule that says if you're going to do the minutes, you've got to do them exactly like this. That would be certifying it. All we're doing is saying you have to do the minutes. Did you do them? Yes. Did you not do them? No. That's it.
I think her saying I received them, I stamped them, received, that's saying they're certified, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's a legal definition for that that could run, get us into trouble. That's why eliminating it is better, in my opinion.
I think so, too.
All right, so we did all that. Shall I go on?
Yeah, let's keep moving.
We added this and through electronic publication. Which we had previously. Nothing here has changed from the committee. Nothing here has changed. This is a language, we went round and round about. The word controminious, as looked up, is a geographic term regarding land bodies being close to each other.
I thought it was co, oh, coterminous?
Con- conterminous, when I looked it up.
I thought it was coterminous.
So we said concurrent and I don't, he didn't have a problem with it. So I think concurrent is a little more understandable, right?
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I remember it being the same thing. We were like, what does that word exactly mean?
And it it's geographic term, it's, I don't know. Uh, moving on, Article nine. He actually sent us his opinion of Article nine and a lot of this is his and we eliminated a great deal of it. All of these changes here are his.
The crossing out of things is his?
Yes, I'm pretty sure. So, yeah, because I if you recall, Tom, I sent Article nine to him and said, why do we need this? Because it was transitioned from when we were town meeting to this document. He said we should keep these things. But all of this stuff down here was eliminated because it had, he had talked about the town and everything. And uh, this stuff here, this language was put in, for instance, when we just did the ranked choice voting amendment, that covers it.
Okay.
So I I don't think, I always felt that this was unnecessary language because we've we're past the transition phase. He was concerned about the listing of all the, all of these things and I said the clerk keeps them. See, he says this here.
Right.
And a lot of these um are are under the, we have the names and the who are there. This just meant when we went from town meeting to the city council and to the city form of government, that these positions would be continued and they may have existed in 1996, but they've changed some of them anyway.
Okay, makes sense.
And um.
Okay, so I I I everything up here is him and it's really, Tom, he like he changed this amendment from adoption. Because he he's dealing with amendments for future charter changes such as this one, whereas this language, adoption, was dealing with when it was first adopted. Do you understand that? I think he took away the word town.
Oh, he actually missed a couple towns.
Right there, right, we're on above the or the amendment up there.
Of the town right here.
Well, that whole paragraph has town all the way through it.
Well, we're going to have to change it to city.
Well, that's.
You know, if you read this, I don't even know why he wants to keep this stuff because it was about the town before the adoption of the charter. In other words, the obligations the town had on taxes and paying bills, et cetera, continued, but.
Oh, okay, so then.
Why do we need it?
I don't know. I'm not going to fight him on it, though. I mean, he thinks it's important that somewhere in our.
Well, I think he wants to make sure, maybe from his point of view, if there's a charter amendment, it can't eliminate obligations that we have and taxes that we have, et cetera. I mean, we could, our tax laws governed by the DOR, for instance, we can't write a charter amendment that says, oh, we're not going to charge anybody any taxes. Be nice one, but. So I I think uh any amendments that might deal with personnel, I guess that's why he wants to keep them. All right, you have any problem with this?
No.
And if you look up here, this is what we added upon, he's talking about amendments. So upon amendment of this charter, these provisions deal with amendments to the charter, not adopting it as it was originally.
Right.
Okay, we did it.
That wasn't so bad.
So, Tom, my opinion. You can go through using my base clean draft and making sure it fits what we've all discussed here, making those changes, going back to our language under like the Department of Public Works, the Director of Public Works, we we wanted to keep that because I eliminated it in my version and we wanted to keep other things. So we'd have to do a fine comb about it.
Okay, so I'll do that and then what I'll do.
Review it at the next meeting, maybe, to make sure we all look at it and see if there's anything we missed.
And I'll send it to to the mayor and the city attorney as well, just and then um if we all agree, then we can just take a vote on it.
I think, I don't know if I agree with sitting it to the city attorney because.
No, I I was going to say, don't do that.
I don't think, I think we should give it to the mayor. You might ask her, because she did, she wasn't here to to debate that. Going to three members in the Board of Public Works, you might ask her to tell you what she was thinking on that.
Right, okay, so.
We could, we could review it at the next meeting. We have to make sure she's here, but we could at least review the, all the changes that we approved, except for that one.
And we can call out those specific instances where we might have had a um a different perspective on this than the city attorney and if any of that looks like it's going to be an issue for her, then she'll have an opportunity to say something about that and otherwise we.
I agree and I I think just let's let's we clean it up and we go, we have to have the next meeting with her.
I agree.
And secondly, I I wanted to debate this um in a moment. All of these changes that we have presented come from the committee. And we haven't given her opportunity to make a change that she wants. She's agreed with a lot of the changes and made suggestions, don't get me wrong, but that one change that she wanted earlier, I don't know if we shouldn't put that forward as a rec, we we agree with the mayor's change and let the council debate it? Or do we want to not even present it? I just don't see why we can't say whether we agree with her change like she's agreeing with our change. And I just wanted to hear your thoughts on it. It wasn't a big deal, but it was her change specifically.
Counselor Coniff, do you have any thoughts on this? I have a couple.
Um, I I'm not clear on which one you're talking about, Dan. Did she, were there several or was there a specific one?
It's one where the city attorney said, do you remember what it was in Article five, maybe uh?
Would have been.
Last year with the budget, I think.
Yeah, so that would probably be five.
Here.
Yeah.
Busted by the mayor. She wanted to change in timing here to reflect what was more practical, I guess, for the budget. Anyway, I wanted her to present it and allow her to write her rationale and ask the council to approve this change as it's being from her, not from the committee. And I don't see why we can't make a comment on it as well and let her present it to us and then we tell the city council what we think, but I just want to know what you guys think.
So I think that it's fine. I mean, procedurally, I I'm okay doing this a couple different ways, but the one thing that I think is important is that we specifically, like if we're making any change to the charter that was not debated within the confines of the Charter Review Committee and it wasn't like a little wording fix that Attorney Tanner suggested, that the council understand that that change is that 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 change came later and that the council vote on it separately. So here's a way we could do it.
I agree, that's good.
Yeah, so we could, we could, we could discuss this in committee and we could say, so here's the document, here's the document is presented to you. Now, in addition to the document, you know, so we we motion, you get a second and then you say, in addition to the document, there were a couple changes that came through in within rules that were requested by the mayor or that a counselor suggested or whatever. And they were these and we discussed them and here's how we voted on them. Like, we we can say that, like, we we voted to recommend this amendment or not, but I think it's important that that that's like, whether it's or not to add those amendments is a separate vote because that's not the stuff that came out of the committee.
I fully agree. We could present one document, that is, the committee's language as reviewed by the mayor. The committee's language, the mayor did, if the mayor indeed vetoed, for instance, the Board of Public Works from five to three, that's her right, but that came from the committee. This case, that's a separate amendment that we debate separately and the council debates separately. I agree, that's fine. I just didn't want to, I I wanted us to make a recommendation whether we think, because, you know, we're a committee and we're supposed to tell the council what we feel. I didn't want to wait for the full, full council debate to have it, although I could do either. To me, it's not a huge thing. And I think this is the only one she's presented that wasn't brought forward previously. Do you have any, do we have any others? I'm curious.
I'll I'll do another once over, but I think you're right. But I just uh, you know, but but that that being said, like, you know, if 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 we looked at this, like, you know, if we if we looked at this now and said, oh, you know, we were going to do it that way, but really, if if I could go back in time, I would have done it a different way and anyone decided to to do something like that, I would want to handle it the same way. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, it's not a big deal. It's about the capital improvement program. I don't think it's a big deal, so that's just me.
No, I I don't think it's a big deal either. I just um just procedurally, because the second that we opened the door to that, you know, then could a a counselor show up at our next meeting with a couple amendments of their own? And just do we have a process for handling that? That's my only thought.
Uh, we're going to have to have a process because.
It sounds like we do.
A counselor can do that and which is scary, which is why it's too bad they haven't been reviewing this. I mean, Peg is the only one who's not been on the committee to go over with this. It's a little scary when the other counselors read it. Where do you, you know, it's going to take some time to convince them that the, that we and the committee have done our due diligence on this, but what can I say? All right, so are we done?
Uh, unless there's any other business that anyone wants to discuss, which I don't think there is.
Next meeting, when do you want it? If you want it. Hey, you're on vacation for a week, right?
Yeah, we wouldn't meet next week, would we?
No, we'll give Tom some time to put, if you put.
We'd have to announce it, we have to announce a meeting, too.
Yeah, so I would debate what you want, Tom, and get back when you want.
I'd be cool with the sixth or the 13th. Either of those are fine with me, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. I could, that's a Thursday, so those Thursdays?
Those are both, I mean, that this time seems to work for everybody, so I was just.
As long as it's not the 20th, because that's a CPA meeting.
Okay, well, how did the sixth and the 13th look for you, Counselor Coniff? Good? Okay.
They're good.
Bring those dates up to the mayor and to Zoe and see um what they think.
Okay, good enough. And our meeting is on the fifth, so we'll announce it then. Good. Thank you very much.
If unless there's anything else, so.
Are we on adjournment now?
Peg made the motion.
I second.
All in favor, Counselor Coniff?
How was your day? Peg is.
Okay, there you go. Counselor rests.
Yes.
And I vote yes, we're adjourned.
I said it. I, 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 I.
Yeah, we got you, just a little bit of a lag. All right, uh, well, yeah, thanks. That went pretty well. I will catch you uh, that, what, two weeks?
I can't believe it, I have two weeks without a meeting and Peg's gone away. Lucky person.
So.
Enjoy your vacation, Peg.
See you later, thank you.
Have fun, everyone. Take care.